Hey everybody. Joe Biden here. And I know a lot of people were upset with my choice for VP. I understand it and I acknowledge it. I empathize wholly with some of the concerns that have been levied across my desk. And I just want to let you guys know that the Democratic Party takes this in consideration. But we don't give a shit. And I hate to be all candid and everything, you know, I'm just three shades away from dementia. And I'm living my best life right now because these are the golden years. But I want to assure you that I do have a heart, you know? I have a heart. A lot of you guys call me Jim Crow Joe and other choice words. But it just rolls off my back mainly because I am so fucking rich that you guys have never touched me. And you know, I'm white. Sorry, don't mean to rub it in, you know, black power, okay? People of color and marginalized groups need attention. And you guys need to just hold a company line like you've been doing for the last 400 years. We appreciate your sacrifice. It's what this great country is built on. And one day someone's gonna be stupid enough to acknowledge that. And talk about reparations in front of a camera. But for right now, all of us got a big ass gun in our backs, even me. If we even think about broaching that subject, it's not that we don't care. Well, a lot of us really don't care, we just actually get off on trolling you guys because you don't have a political base. But uh, I just want you to know, we, we put a lot into this election and we like to, we like you guys to just go on down to those polls with or without a mask and pull that lever down for the Democratic Party. It's our turn to be in charge of the country again. I mean, Trump had a good run, but come on guys, you know, he's not a team player or anything. He actually tries to do things, no matter how they turn out and shit and look what you got, okay? He can have sloppy mess or you could just have more of the same old crap. That's what I'm just trying to get across to you guys, you know? Don't be mad because I picked the candidate that was best for the job. You don't understand what it took to get this vice presidential candidate, what went into it? I mean, we've been talking about this for months and you know, I just honestly didn't have a clue and a lot of times I didn't even remember I was supposed to have a vice presidential candidate. But once the, once the one percenters, you know, kept blowing up my phone and you know, sending guys over in the middle of night to poke me in the stomach with a, with a M16, I knew I had to get on board and get this done. And I made the choice that's best for a lot of the American people with money, you know? I mean, come on man, it's our turn, man, it's my turn too, you know? Like hell, I was a sock puppet for Obama and he didn't know what the fuck he was doing and shit for a minute. And now it's my turn, so that's why I got a female version of him and shit. Cause now she's gonna help me out, it's kind of like a role reversal, I mean, very well can't nominate Obama for vice president and that wouldn't go over with a lot of Trump's followers and shit and I gotta get those guys, man. So don't be mad, you know? I mean, people of color and illegal immigrants and marginalized groups, they need their day and it's up to you to make that sacrifice once again. Just give us another hundred years of, of sleep, okay? You guys go back and watch your NBA games and you look at your raps and the Cardi B and the Wap Wap. I like that one, oh man, do I love that Cardi B and her new black mammy friend Megan Thee Stallion and I just love those guys and I love that video. I've been watching this so much that my wife has sent a bunch of cease and desist letters to my fucking bedroom. But it's okay because I just had the CIA go over there and show her that of acid, you know, if she want to talk out of turn, you know, gotta keep that, we gotta keep the, we gotta keep the women in that place, you know? But uh, and I respect women and everything, don't get it wrong and shit, you know? I think I didn't take my pill. You know, yeah, they told me it's a hair club for men and shit, but it's actually a dementia pill. Ah yeah, man, you know, I love the blacks. You know, that's why I love you guys, man, I love you, that's why I talk all that gibberish, man. I mean, somewhere in there's a legitimate thought. And, and you know, yeah, you know, the whole crime bill thing, man, come on, man. I had a job to do, man. You gotta play the game sometimes, you know, you gotta get in where you fit in. And because of me, a lot of you guys fit in these small ass sales, man. What are you talking about? It's kind of like free rent, man, I'm actually giving you guys some, some, I'm giving you something back, you know, I've been doing that, man, since I've been in, in, in Washington, man. Don't get mad about that crime bill. Look, you got free housing out of them, free meals, you know? And a couple of times a day you get to walk around and you got security up there on that prison tower. And what you upset about? You need to vote for Joe Biden. But you know, honestly, the purpose of this video is, you know, I just wanted to let you know how I came to my decision to vote for Kamala Harris, you know, to nominate her, you know? They came to my office and they laid out all these photos on the desk, you know? And they said, Joe, you gotta choose one of these, these women. And we need a woman of color and we need you to choose one. And I was like, okay, okay, I'm cool. You know, you know, I don't mind having a woman long she know her place, you know? I mean, hell, ain't like she ever gonna be no, no president or nothing, you know? I'm gonna make it and I'm, I'm very spry for 1,051 years of age. So yeah, they lay out these pictures, right? And uh, you know, I got a couple of choice candidates on that desk there. And I got like a, well, I gotta say it wasn't easy. Hold on, I'm getting a thought there. Getting a thought, oh. Yeah, 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 they, they put a cup on it, they said it had to be a black woman or not, I, I tried to negotiate for, for that old Spanish gal, that Cortez woman, but they said they hated her hair lip. And I hated it too or not, because you know, one time I, I grabbed her pussy. Uh, what did I say? Uh, uh, just forget about that, you know? You know, just forget about that, I didn't do that. Man, you know, even if I did, she probably would have, you know, grabbed my hand like she was gonna shake it and just bit down on my thumb and tried to sever it until the, you know, the secret service guys put that gun in her, in her ear, you know? Then she, you know, everything was cool because you know, I'm a, you know, I'm a pimp, man. You know? Now, you know, I'm about to, I'm a man of the people, man. You guys never knew that because uh, you know, I chose to be an Obama shadow, you know? And I love that coon, I mean, I love that guy, you know, he's an awesome guy, man, he's one of my best friends in the world. So like, you know, they put these pictures on the desk, right? And I looked down there and I see these candidates, you know? Uh, you got Val Demins, you know? She was up there and they put like, uh, for some reason, I don't know how that got on, I asked them it was an accident, but they just left the picture there. They wouldn't answer me, I asked them about the next picture and they said like, they didn't say nothing, they just left it there and it was a picture of Elizabeth Warren. And I was just like, I'm pretty sure this picture don't belong on here. You know, I don't think that's the one we need to be looking at here. But they left that picture up there and I looked over and I, I knew those guys was funding me, man, I knew they was funding me. Because there was a picture of Stacey Abrams there. And I know that was a joke, you know? Man, she a nice lady and everything, she good at fundraising and you know, being a human shield for me at the black church and everything, you know, so nobody, some of them people don't stand up and you know, turn their backs to me like they did Bloomberg. Yeah, yeah, they put Stacy there, you know, I thought that was just, you know, I was supposed to sign that, you know, because that's her pay pretty much. You know, and uh, had a couple of other pictures there, but you know, those two, I was like, man, I don't know if that, that's gonna, that's gonna fly, man. You know, I knew they was funding me. I know they was funding me, man. And uh, Keisha Lance Bottoms was there, you know, and I, I liked her, yeah, and that, that's a fine looking woman right there, that is one fine woman, you know, makes me think back to my, my youth, you know, sometimes, you know, you, you know, you meet a certain kind of a girl, you know? Behind the hedge bush and you know, she know what she was there for, you know, she uh, you know, topped me off, you know? And uh, you know, I thought it was cool, but you know? I, I don't, you know, I was still kind of hesitant, so you know, I looked across and saw some old pictures there and had this picture, you know, I saw this picture just sticks out in my craw, you know, it's got in my craw, man. Something about that picture, man. And I looked at it and um, and it was Kamala Harris, you know? And I was very familiar with her, she had taken some of my tenants and just ran with the ball. You know, you can't beat that, you know, when you got a team player like that, you know? And a couple of guys, they were like, you know, uh, you know, she had some issues that might be problematic, but you know, don't worry, the, the blacks don't have no political base or anything, you know, they're pretty much disparate and spread all out. They don't have any unity, it's just the way we engineered them all those 400 years. And I say, hey, you know, we're not supposed to be saying that, you know? You're not supposed to be saying that stuff in public, man, or even to each other, man. But we just know, you know, we give our little, you know, Mason, Masonic signs, you know? That's like pretty much says it all. So yeah, you know, I was looking at Kamala Harris and you know? And I looked around, you know, and they told me that if I didn't like that, they had this female in a wheelchair. This is a war veteran and everything, but I was like, man, you know, I don't want to put her through all that rolling in that chair, you know, I don't want to put her through that. And I respect the women, you know, I respect it and, and besides, she wasn't like no, no black person, she was like an Asian and, and uh, they, they pretty much hit the other side, man, they in the red party there, you know? No matter what we give them, they gonna vote for red, just like the Spanish folk. So uh, you know, I had all these, uh, I had these women, right? And I had to like, they told me I had to talk to them and stuff, I'm like, why I gotta talk to them, man? They've given them the opportunity to stand next to a fine white man, you know? And I asked if, you know, we was gonna have to, you know, get some checks and balances in here, you know? Because all that Me Too stuff and you know, you know, last year a couple of people tried me, you know, talking about I'm all creepy and everything and I'll be rubbing on those women and filling them up and you know, you know, hot dogging them and shit, you know, through our clothes and you know, dry humping them pretty much and you know, and we got that taken care of, you know? You know, when you got like a, you know, you could get like a Navy SEAL team and shit to like, you know, go in somebody's house at like three in the morning and and, and put, put a serrated knife under their throat and ask them how they feel about talking about Joe Biden, you know? I think things just got squared and everything, you know, they actually donated to the campaign, man. And some, some chick, you know, she, she, you know, they, they even brought me one of the girls had, that said it was okay for me to have a pair of her panties, you know? I thought that was pretty cool, you know? I'm a man of class and everything, I'm a family man, I love my wife and children. You know, I love them and shit as much as I can stand them. And that's why I travel so much. You know, I'm an older gentleman, I could, you know, if I, if I didn't care about America, I would just stay in my mansion and drive my multiple sports cars around without a care in the world, you know? Get no, old Baraka come over there and detail my car. While me and Michelle talk about things in the, in my, in my home office. But you know, he, he got some stuff to do, you know, he trying to build that old library, we gotta, yeah, yeah, we, he busy over there gentrifying the south and you know, shadow gentrifying the south, you know, so, so they can just turn that into like a little old Pleasantville there. We gonna run all, I mean, uh, you know, the, the blacks, they, they gonna get a nice place to live, you know, we gonna build some more supermax prisons. Yeah, we love you guys, man. We love you. Man, you gotta vote for Joe Biden, man. Because you know, it's hard running a country like America, you know, it takes a lot to to set the, all these things in motion, you know, to get the right people paid and grease the hands and make sure I'm covered with all the ethnic groups, you know, except, you know, for certain people that don't have no economic base or any tangibles or nothing. Yeah, that's right. That's what we do. So I, you know, they told me I had to talk to these women, man. So right off the bat, man, Elizabeth Warren, I was not talking to her because she, she just raised me the wrong way. She has got a, a, a whole log stuck in her back door that I ain't keen on pulling out, if you get my drift. So uh, she, she got ghosted, you know, she texted me a couple of times, but I was like, you know, uh, you ain't wet no more down there, you dry as a sandbox, honey, and I gotta keep it moving. Sorry. And I was like, well, you know, it wasn't that hard getting her off, you know, because I had those Navy SEALs ready to visit her too. Even though she has her team, but you know, I, I can make a few calls, man, and take that shit away. Because I, you know, I'm a player. That's right brothers, I'm a player, man. And old Biden, old Biden, man, you know, they wanted me to like talk to like uh, Keisha Lance Bottoms. And I, yeah, I saw the pictures, I was like, yeah, yeah, I, I could really talk to her, I would really, really like to have a private conversation with her. Like a real lone private conversation at like a five star motel, you know? But then, you know, that whole riot thing happened, you know, I don't know why those riots were happening, I don't, those people were upset about something, you know? And I think the welfare got like stalled or something, they uh, they said something about some guy getting killed by the cops, you know, and I think that's pretty bad, you know, I empathize with that situation, I empathize and that's why we're gonna fund the cops, man, we're gonna give them so much ordinance, it's gonna be like you got your own private little GI Joe in those neighborhoods there and those little shitty neighborhood, I mean, uh, those, those little enclaves of ethnicity. They're gonna make sure you guys are safe, that's why we're gonna roll some goddamn tanks down those streets eventually. Yeah, man, we gotta just work on some of those civil liberties, man, that's the only thing standing in our way. You guys gotta trust us to make the right decisions. That's right. So they, you know, I curbed Elizabeth Warren's stinking ass and you know? And they wanted me to meet up with, with Keisha Lance Bottoms, I was all in, man, but then my boy in the, my secret surgeon contingency. You know, one of my guys, he, he been whispering in my ear that she got like kids, man. And I was like, you know, I don't kinda, you know, she a MILF, man. You know, she like, she got nice little, uh, you know, little, little, little hips going on there, you know, get the hip dip, you know? I'm like, nah, I think she could be like a real good vice president if we just talk about some stuff, you know? And she got like, you know, but they, he kept telling she was married, I was like, look, man, I think her husband's gonna understand what's the, once I have a couple of guys roll up on him and, you know, while he trying to back out of his garage in his car, you know, and they can walk up there and put that gun on that windshield, you know? And snatch him up out of there, you know? I think he understand that me and his wife gonna talk. But uh, you know, the guy kept going, you know, and it's like they didn't want me to do nothing with, you know, Keisha Lance Bottoms and, you know, he went so far as to show me a, you know, a picture of her with Shaq, and they say, you know, she's probably been with Shaq, man, you know, look at that guy, you know? Do you really want to follow that guy into the Grand Canyon? And I say, well, you know, I've been worse places, you know? And I've been traveling around the world, I've been a lot of bad places, man, you know, with the proper protections and everything, so I don't see nothing wrong. But when I saw the picture, I noticed that she had a, you know, she wasn't working out that as much as I thought, you know? And the picture they showed me, it was, I think it was the younger picture when she was starving, you know, she wanted to get in the office real bad. And then they showed me a picture of her, her kids and her husband and I was like, oh, that's a rap. You know, I, I don't care if she got one or two kids, but she had like, like four kids and, and I checked the husband out and you know, he, he looked like he would be down to have a meeting with, you know, all three of us have a meeting, so he could see how the political process goes, you know? You know, I could see him sitting in that, sitting in the, in the bedroom in that, at that five star, you know, just watching what goes on with it. And watching his wife go up that corporate ladder, man. You know, go up that, that ladder, that political, you know, reach the heights, you know, her career reached a, reached some serious heights, man, because uh, you know, she got kind of like an old school Halle Berry haircut and you know, I always talk about those hips, man, and I guess with all those damn kids, she was a baby making. You know, but they, then, then, you know? You know, I got that call, you know, and they told me that, that she wasn't gonna fly because uh, you know, it was kind of pissed off about her letting the, the CNN building get, get tagged, you know, I thought that was pretty messed up, I'd say, you know, we could just deport all them Mexicans, you know? And they say, you can't say that because you're Democrat, now, oh, yeah, yeah, right, right, I'm wearing a blue hat, right, okay? I can't switch up and that, no, 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 Trump's already there. So I was like, damn, I had to like curb Keisha Lance Bottoms, but I would have, you know, I just, I told them, maybe we could have some talks about other offices later and they said that was cool, like, because I've really got to make an appointment with her hip, I mean, her uh, representative. And uh, so I was like, well, we got left here. And they was like, check it out, why don't you talk to this young lady right here named Stacey Abrams? And I looked at her and I said, oh, you guys are funding me, man, you guys are funding me. Oh my, didn't she play in that, that Precious movie? You know, then she do, she did like that CGI thing, right? Now she was the mama and the daughter in Precious, wasn't she? They said, no, 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 those, those are two different people, okay? This is a, this is a congresswoman, she's a staunch member of our party. I said, yeah, but she got like a gap in her teeth, you know, you can't trust nobody with a, with a gap in the tooth and you know, she smiled too much and you see her teeth and everything. And she ain't really got no nick. So I was just like, you know? I don't know if this gonna go, and they told me I had to meet her and they said, they had already set up the meeting, you know? It's like a nice restaurant and so I was like, man, no. We can't do that, we gonna have to have a private meeting somewhere where, you know? A lot of people can't see me with her, you know, because they, you know, it don't look cool. Biden's the man, okay, I'm a player. And uh, you know, we, the players don't get down with the fatties. Now, I hate to, you know, I just want to be real about that, and I'm positive, positive, man, don't get mad, you know, I need those votes, girls. You know, don't get mad about that. You know, Stacy shows up, you know, and I guess they tried to like, you know, sweeten the, put a little sugar in the pot there, you know, and what, pot belly, you did. They throwing a little sugar in it, she showed up, man, and uh, she was wearing like this top and you know, she had her, her, her top shelf spirits. They was busting out, man, I was like, man, you know, if only those, those uh, spirits was on a smaller woman, man, I would be all in, man. I was like, man, the size of those spirits, man, if that was on a regular woman, it's like, you know, whatever, you know, so like, you know, I meet her up, you know, we, we chatting about policies and thing and she started talking about how the patriarchy and all that nonsense and I wouldn't have none of that, I was like, hey, you know, you tread lightly, honey. Tread lightly, you know, I, I got a public face, but I got the private real face, you know? And you get, you know, I don't want to give you the back of my hand, you know? You know, I know, you know, I don't want to give you the back of my hand, you know, don't get none of that, that black woman anger stuff, you know, don't, don't, don't mouth out for roll your lack of a neck, you know, don't roll your shoulders, I guess, you know? Now just be cool and, and she was just kept on running off at the mouth, you know? And uh, you know, I spent like the next five minutes just looking at those titty, I mean, uh, looking at her situation. And uh, I had to know body there, but that, you know, like she already knew what was going on. So I think like I was going to bathroom and I got my limo and she was up in there and I was like, god damn, man. And then this SOBs, man, those guys funding me, man, they drove off to that five star motel. And she somehow, she, 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 she the, you know, she's a very assertive woman, she's a, she got up in that, that elevator and elbow my, my secret service gang got in there and went up there and I was like, damn, man. So I had to curb her ass too, man, I had to like do a special mission, you know, I had to call some boys, I texted some of my, my boys, man. And we got up there and she, she was like, I was like, man, what, what you doing, you know? And you got to, you, you don't take your clothes off, girl, okay, we just talking, we just, we negotiating here. We negotiating and uh, and then she was, she was ready to negotiate, man, for real. And I told her just, you know, hey, you know, I gotta sit, I gotta do a number two. And I went up in that bathroom and opened that window and they throw down one of those uh, life preservers on the rope. And yanked my ass up out of there like in Dark Knight, you know, and I just like a freaking Dark Knight movie, man, they yanked me up in that military helicopter and I got the hell out of there. And I had to block her ass, man, because she was out of pocket, man. And I had to make some calls, man. And I called my boy Barry and I said, look Barry, now you guys say, y'all stop funding me with Stacey, Stacey Abrams, man, I'm just not into grimace, okay? I can't be dating no, no weebowabas, okay? And if this keeps up, Michelle gonna have to come over here for this VP nomination up for real. You know, I'm gonna have to really nominate the hell out of Michelle, I might even come to your house tonight and have a meeting with Michelle, you know? And I just, you know, you guys stop funding me and, and he said he wasn't funding me, man, he, he was busy, you know, he was somewhere, uh, you know, on a, you know, kayaking with a, you know, Andrew Gilliam and everything and, and this other guy. And I can't really say that guy's name because I don't want nobody to pop me, man, help, you know, pull a Kennedy on me and all. So I was just like, you know, whatever, so you know? And after everything was cool, you know, we, we got old girl, you know, situated, you know, we told her like, you know, she about to get some allegations, you know, she didn't like tone it down. She got a, she got, we gave her something, man, you told her she could work on the voter suppression deal. That's a great little, little program there, you know, where we just, we gaslight the fuck out of you people, man. And a lot of you motherfuckers, man, you, you, you just be like sleep at the wheel, man. And you keep on sleeping, man, till I get what I need and shit. And then you guys are, you worried about tomorrow, okay, once, once I get what I need, okay? So uh, you know, there's only one more person left and that was Kamala Harris and I, like, it was a process of elimination pretty much. And I checked her out, man, and she had what I, I mean, you know? You know, I saw her dossier, man, I, you know, I, I really thought about this, man, you know, I know her history is a little problematic, but I looked her up and down. You know, and I, you know, I checked her out, you know, she seemed like a very professional politician. We set that meeting up and you know, and I seen her husband a couple of times, you know, that guy, he, he busy eating hors d'oeuvres, you know, he ain't watching his wife, you know? That Willie Brown told me that that guy don't, that guy don't know nothing, you know? I got sleep at the wheel, like, he want to be sleek, I think that's a good idea, you know, and I hate them, you know, some guy to have like a, you know, just disappear and all. But, but it's okay, everything worked out in the end, you know, we met up and, oh my God, did we click, man? I mean, she is very easy on the eyes, you know, even post-war, you know, she's not in her good years or nothing. But uh, she still got a little bit left from the old days, man. And then, you know, we, we went to a new five star. And you know, I had my boys turn out the, all the whole floor and everything and we had a meeting. And we had a bunch of meetings that day, man, those were some of the best meetings I ever had in my whole political career. I mean, Dusty Trombone and Dirty Sanchez and man, it was just awesome, man, that's just, we just clicked so much and I said, you know, I could really see her at my side, why change the country for the better. So you know, you guys really can't be getting upset about this stuff, man. You know, when, when election time, when November rolled around here, you guys just going down there and pull that blue lever. Okay, it's our turn, okay? I mean, you had your fun with Trump and everything, you know? Man, he's, he ain't too smart, okay? That guy ain't too smart. And that guy got shit on himself while he was golfing and kept golfing, man, come on. Hey, you gonna do, hey, you gonna do that, man? And look, look what kind of uh, women he negotiating with, you know, like Candace Owens, man, she has not combed her hair since 2017. And something up with her lips, man, I think she, she one of those opioid users. You know, I don't know. But uh, I think Kamala Harris is gonna work out just fine, I mean, she has been regularly having these meetings with me and man, I, my toes just curl on up when she talking and everything, her voice is so, so, ah, man, I just love the way she laughs and and black people that she locked up. And she, she's so personable and you know, she's a woman of the people, man. I mean, man, you can't find a better politician, man, she belongs to the streets. And she belonged to the streets, baby. And that's why I picked her. And I just want to say in passing that the Democratic Party has your best interests at heart and it's our turn to run the country, okay? It's our turn, I'm not getting no younger, I gotta get what was promised to me by those goddamn elites, okay? And don't, don't stand in front of this, okay, y'all can riot later, but you know, you gotta hold your nose and pull that lever down and vote for me. Vote for Biden, okay? Biden is a player. He's the man, okay, okay? Why you think I picked that, man, we gonna be like a regular old Jay-Z and Beyonce. And you know, by the way, I, I asked about having a meeting with her, but they said it, you know? You know, if we met, you know? One of her unsanctioned alters might come out and hurt me in some way and now we just really can't explain how she would disappear at the hell of gunfire, you know? When she stabbed me in the penis with a, with a spoon. So you know, it's very disappointing, you know? And I had that meeting with Cardi B, but you know? And I had that meeting with Cardi B, but you know, she, she, she actually asked for money upfront. And I was like, nah, your cooter is not, not right. Now we'll just do the thing and shit, you know, yo, yo, maybe you'll, we'll, we'll do some exercises. So Cardi uh, came to my room and she practiced pulling that lever down a bunch of times. She pulled and tugged a lot. And then once I knew she got it, she got it, you know? She had, she got a really nice, you know, I gave her a cream pie and a pearl necklace and sent her on her way. And then I went to that, you know, I went to, you know, I went to the Veterans Hospital and they gave me the latest, you know, meds for that, you know, a, a condition. But it was okay because uh, you know, Kamala, you know, she didn't care. She was actually there watching, you know? She actually left for Cardi B when, and took the bottle of House South with her. Anyway, that's all I had to say. This has been a pre-presidential, you know, kind of like a town hall, you know, I mean, I got it in a bag. I'm gonna win no matter what, okay? I'm gonna win no matter what. And you guys are just, you're brain dead, you know, you're gonna vote for, you're gonna vote for the blue party? What you got, you know? You, you wanna have four more years of Trump, you know? You wanna have four more years of Trump? Man, they can't even finish that wall. And I promise you that when I get in, nothing will change, okay? Maybe we could mix the, mix the two parties, the blue and the red, you know, maybe make one purple party, you know? It all works out, you know, Kamala's happy as long as she gets to ride my coattails. And she gonna be doing a lot of riding in those four years and, you know? Oh yes, I am so stocked up on Cialis and Viagra and all kind of street shooters, man. Man, we are gonna have a great old time running this country into the ground. Anyway, that's all, you know, don't forget, uh, Biden and Kamala, that's the ticket, you know, see you in November.